Okay.
Is that in the right location?
Yeah.
Is that always the right spot? Yeah, it's pretty close.
Where'd Ashley go?
Right there.
Did you take your chair with her or?
Oh. Alright, we're on.
You ready?
On Ashley. Go ahead.
She's still new.
Legislative priorities.
Alright.
She can hear you.
Alright, Ashley can hear now. Go on in, close the door. Um. That's a legislative. Right there. So. The big two things that I'm gonna ask council that would hope that you two would serve you to, that you would support on these two items would be for the centrifuge and the one-way couplets slash alleyway slash parking lot, which is for the activated alleyway that was in the budget. Um, for one point five six, one million five hundred sixty-three thousand for the activated alleyway, um, cost, associated costs. What's your?
Hi, everybody.
Talking about legislative ass, uh, legislative agenda this year.
Okay.
And the other one for the centrifuge would be for their, um, the water reclamation project, um, now be for four hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred. Both of those projects are fully funded through the budget and through other, um, different monies that we already have loans, correct, in the centrifuge or?
The centrifuge is our one.
That's our, all our money. And so, and so is the, um, activate alleyway, that's all our money. It's, hello. And, uh, tomorrow we're over in. No, I just, yeah. It's, I'm not, I just.
Roll this one.
Yeah, go on.
Keep going.
Keep rolling, rolling, rolling. But. Uh, let this do nothing. Alright, anyway.
I got you.
So anyway, the centrifuge before twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and one-way alleyway slash parking lot or one point nine one. Those are what, um, I would like to propose to the council for you to, um, I know, we don't have to have an official approval on this, but, um, I, I want support and you won't do it otherwise.
Would we ask?
Go ahead.
You were first.
Go ahead.
I wanna know what's the detail, what the alleyway, what needs to be done?
Cody, you wanna talk about specifically what we wanted, we need to get a B four?
Sorry. Yeah, so the one-way couplets. The one-way couplets and the active alleyway and the street are all, or the parking lot are all one project. The active alleyway is installing lights, um, centering the road a little bit, putting some parking at the very end, um, installing outlets on the lights for food trucks, vendors, whatever. And that, that's mainly the alleyway, actually, I have a very minimal work there for the other two. So one-way couplets are sidewalks, maintaining the sidewalks both way down, um, putting a sidewalk on the side where the museum is, putting in lights, two twenty plugs for food trucks. Um, and then creating, uh, angle parking down the entire one-way, for those people in the streets. And the parking lot right here, as we've talked about, is a, you know, large parking lot, hundred-ish spaces, uh, paved with, uh, stormer system.
Is it this street and the next one up, you're talking about going one-way?
Yeah, this street right here and then one right across, Washington McKenzie. And that's a BD and.
I forgot where I made it.
So, yeah, right up here and the next one. So Washington can be a one-way going this way, and Kennedy be a one-way going this way.
And all those projects add up to about one point five million. Um, some change. The other project centrifuge, you wanna talk about that, what it does?
Yeah, so as you may or may not know, in the last, uh, my just cycle from the state, we got money for the bio dryer, which is the thing that actually dries the solids in terms of fertilizer. The centrifuge is what spins up before it gets to the bio dryer and, you know, gets the initial sort of liquid out and then pumps everything to the bio dryer. So if there's one more piece, we can get a little cheaper from the federal government. We already budgeted for it, we're gonna pay for it. But any money we can get back is money that our utility great players don't have to pay, and that could further let down line, allow us to lower rates or do something else. So it just helps subsidize our house by getting some money from the state government.
So if we were to get that, is that lowering the amount of the loan we're using?
No, this one's straight out of our budget. So the loan is, uh, that thirty-three million. And this is what, so we're paying the same fund though. So the loan we're paying back from the sewer fund, this is directly from the sewer fund, this is five million we've saved up to build the bio dryer solids section.
So if we get that money. Is, is that money we're not gonna take from the loan? Or are we just gonna take that money and pay it directly to the loan?
So there's two things you can do. So, um, if we don't, it'll be money we're not spending from the enterprise fund that we thought we were gonna spend. So it's five hundred-ish thousand dollars we wouldn't have to spend on this. It could be applied to the loan to lower our loan payments. Or it could be done to subsidize rates at a later time or offset projects in the future or something else. So.
I mean, honestly, if that's what we're gonna get state money for, then in my opinion, it should go straight to paying the whole off.
Yeah, I mean, that was one way of looking at it. Um. I think that's good. I, I think that'll help us lower water rates in the future, um, cause that money, like Cody's saying, is going towards that stuff. Um, going towards paying off that loan. So that would, could and would be applied for that. Um, all there are other ways to look at is, this is all our money that we're spending here in the city. Um, we, like Cody said, we have a loan, we have, we have them budget, we budget for both of these projects. But that's just money, especially if we do it for the, um, not the centrifuge, is the other project, the other projects are enterprise funds, correct?
Which one?
The, um, activated alleyway.
It's street funds, which they're not an enterprise fund, but they're still funded. We have to subsidize with general fund money and the vast tax.
Sure. So. Knowing that, we could, um, pay for other projects. Um, I mean, that's a lot of money in our, you know, we probably won't get all of that. We'll ask for all of it, but if, I mean, that's a two million dollar ask almost. Um, I, I think we, I, again, this is just me thinking, uh, from my experience, probably between seven hundred and one point three million, somewhere around there is what realistically I think we can get. Much like you this year, um, maybe higher, maybe lower, but, um, we should be able to get some money for these. These are all projects that are already, um, budgeted for, they're already planned for, and they're shovel-ready, which is what the legislature likes. Um, open to other ideas too, if council has any other ideas on projects, um, given that we're getting money from, this is all in the capital budget. Um, but there are also opportunities, if you think, for, um, transportation budget, we can get money for that as well for existing projects that we have.
What did we ask for last year in getting game?
We didn't, um, well, we asked for fifty thousand for the dock part, and we got that. Now's our only ask, um, kinda, so. We were teeing them up for this year, cause this is a big year, um, big biennial budget. Last year, we got some small, which was great. It's, it's big impact for us, fifty thousand. Fifty thousand dollars to spend locally, but, um, this will be our big ask and hopefully like, you know, like Cody's saying, or, um, James saying, this will lower our, um, hopefully the water rates in the future.
If we're talking about road budgets, why don't we put something to this number C, Algiers Drive Closure Road, which is.
Well, I don't think that would, don't think that would apply for.
That won't work.
Well, not at this point. One, because it's, yeah, one, it's not our property, so there's some plans for.
Use it for purchase. Can't use the money for.
No, not for the capital budget. I mean, you could do capitals, but we have to have like a plan and everything set. Um, we asked for money, we could let such or where they're authorized.
Okay.
But though, I mean, there's other steep street projects we could ask for still. Um, we still ask for, uh, what's the connection to the, um, to your road, road, that upgrade? Yeah. Is that fully funded yet through, um, our other, um, grant money?
The design is fully funded for TRP.
But project money is, or actual construction is not?
Not, yeah. Most time, like you said, it's not show ready, we haven't started designing it, but we have the money for the design of that, which is huge.
Okay, so we could ask for design money, but not, this one's already funded. We'd ask for design money for a different project that's already on our six-year, um, or, um, I think it has to be our six-year, Cody, has to be our six-year plan?
Yeah, it's your six-year transportation.
Yeah, right.
Brian had it.
It was the southern loop.
Marked it in the southern gear, so the.
What, what I'm asking is, are they already planned that we have a thing that now we just need to start putting together and shovel-ready? And then is the rest of it, is that might be another one, do you even consider getting a grant, uh, as a grant money to try to get the, um, plan put together? So it's, we can have a complete plan for the whole thing.
Yeah, um, so the southern, the parts of the southern loop are on there, not the entire thing. So the Palm Boulevard extension, the, um, Mossman or Ninety-Third extension's on there. The Mill Road to Ninety-Second, I think is on there. Um, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. There's a couple other parts of the southern, not the entire thing is on there. That is something you could, yes.
That, I think that might be something worthwhile to get a grant for, to get that put together as a plan, so we can start looking at trying to complete the southern loop to try to get another third of the traffic out of Young, and now we can have the central business district even more. We'll work on a lot. I think, uh, it's just something I think we need to try to look at doing, because you had the federal government that passed the infrastructure plan. This is a, for Southern Thurston County, Young being one of the largest, uh, one of the fastest-growing elements of Thurston County. We need some help on getting our, the road infrastructure put together, so that we can get the bypasses done, or, I mean, five-ten. That state, but the southern loop will be one that we can do and then turn to developers and say, hey, you know, reimburse a certain portion back. And we can finally start getting some of the traffic alleviation on.
Cody, are there any projects you can think of, uh, that would add to that southern loop that are shovel-ready or?
None are shovel-ready to do, to start design work, but there's some that pencil really well, and like Road Road is one, um, and that's why it got funded by TRPC.
Are any of those for the southern bypass, so we're, um, ready for like design, sign money?
The only one that I would say would be ready for design that could be done relatively quickly, the no-road connection and possibly the Bald Hills to Walmart Boulevard. Um, the issue with that one is the company acquisition is gonna be very hard for the those, the, or, the Bald Hill Road to Walmart Boulevard.
Are there other traffic, um, traffic projects that you think would be ready for planning or construction?
I think Wilkinson will be your next big one. Um, the Wilkinson rebuild railway is another one that we've been looking at, um. Specifically, council members have talked about maybe a walkway there, so railway's on one with that. Although that could be easier to do, I know they're not part of the southern loop, but they pencil really well and they're doing like, helping people get walking lanes, bike lanes, places they're gonna go.
Alright.
Also.
Also. Go, yeah.
The Bald Hill to Walmart. Is that gonna cut through the property where they're trying to put that east part along?
Yeah, so part of the design of theirs has an opening where it leaves a road to go through there. So when someone comes in like that with design, we know that a road's gonna go there, through there. So we make them design around it. So like their final design, whenever they get there, um, has a road, a space in the middle for a road.
They, they give it up, so you kinda time work?
Uh, I met with them about a month ago, um, they had, they had issued the new product done, so they're bringing in some new investors, and it looks like it might start again soon.
Um, I don't know if this is probably better for the end, but, so, sure you all are aware of their little, little news thing a few months ago. Seven cars have rebuilt titles without telling people. Um. Would we be, are we able to do some kind of city ordinance or something where any car sales place, they have to clearly?
Just close.
Display that it's a rebuilt title vehicle?
Not sure. We should probably talk under your initiatives, though.
Okay, let's do that.
Anything else on legislative priorities?
Um, so if y'all would be okay with the, um, centrifuge and one-way couplets, um, the active alleyway stuff, um. We can start with those two and then add additional, um, get another project in, whether it's the, um, southern bypass or a different street project, um, that we could go for in the transportation budget. That'd be something that's acceptable.
So my, so my sidewalk's in as number three.
Uh, yeah, whatever that budget is, I, it sounds like.
It's in a transportation plan.
These couple of projects, but yeah, we'll, um, we'll discuss that one a little more and I'll have some more for you. Upcoming.
Does not.
And then until that, we'll, um, start.
Connect sports, even elementary to downtown.
Anything else on that? Alright, beautification grant updates. I don't know who's doing what.
I don't know, I'm here because I have one thing to share for this. I'm gonna put here and then, then.
You hired.
This is pretty short and simple, um. Before I share my screen, I just kinda wanted to, real quickly, I know that you guys are all aware of this, but just so that anybody watching or listening to our recording later will have an understanding of the beautification grant. Um, so the city council approved resolution six twenty-four that established, um, a young community beautification grant, um, on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. So last year, we had our first year. Um, so the grant is intended to provide community value through enhancing the aesthetic appeal, um, in the city. So we had a budget of twenty-five thousand that the council approved to award. Uh, we did receive five applications totaling twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars. We were able to award four grants, um, that totaled fourteen thousand, five hundred. So we awarded, um, a mural that's facing the Yum-Tumino Trail. We were able to award a grant to paint one of the commercial buildings on Yum Avenue. We did a neighborhood mailbox art wrap project. And also landscape garden rock beautification project, um, on Yum Avenue. Yes. So the project is completed, um, as far as it can be, the, um, due to the weather and the timing. They actually spent the entire grant amount, but they've also, they spent, um, their own money purchasing all of the plants. They have the planting. Um, and they have it in their greenhouse. So they purchased them and provided us with those receipts, but because of the weather, they're not able to get them planted, so. Um, they do have them, like I said, in their own greenhouse and they're taking care of them. And then as soon as the weather warms up enough, they'll get those, the plants planted. But if you walk through, it does look really nice, the walkway going through there and it, yeah, so it does look really good. So the committee did meet in November and reviewed the projects. We reviewed all the projects that were funded. Um, and then discussed twenty-twenty-three. So the amount that was approved in this, in the budget for twenty-twenty-three was also twenty-five thousand to be awarded. Um, so after the, we got through the first year when the committee met, they looked at the, um, process and reviewed the, let me share my screen really quick, and we'll just go over these pretty minor changes, but I just wanna review them with you and see if you have any questions. Mostly it's the date. Screen here. Okay, so as from what was approved, basically what we did is the, the original grant application process that you approved had specific dates on it, like Thursday, July seventh at five o'clock is when the applications were due. Well, Thursday is not always gonna be July seventh, so when the committee looked at it, so we're gonna accept applications during the month of February. Um, that way every year can be consistent and the same will have this posted on our website. Um, applications will be, um, they'll review the applications and they will be, um, presented to the city council at the first meeting in April. Um, applications are due March first of each year. So we're gonna add this information to the app, to the committee information or the application information. Um, just that they, they open the first week in February. Applications must be submitted by the first Friday in March at five P M. The beautification grant committee will meet during the first and second weeks, the weeks of March every year to review them. Committee recommendations will be presented to the council first meeting in April. Projects must be completed by September thirtieth in the year that they were awarded. And that was, that was decided so that we could, if there were projects that needed to be planted or things like that, it kinda put that deadline in September so that they would have to be done within a time that they could be planted during that year. Um, and then the request for reimbursements need to be submitted by October fifteenth. And that is a little bit of a quick turnaround, but two weeks, but the committee talked about it and decided that that would be the best approach, because when they finish, when you finish a project, it's fresh, you've got all your receipts right there, they're handy, so it's easiest if you can just, you've got all your information, if you can gather that and get it submitted. Um.
Quick question.
Yes.
Little more, um. So, but there it says, applications due by March first each year, but then the following my application process opens. Applications must be submitted by the first Friday in March by P M, which is it gonna be?
The first Friday in March. They open the during February. Let's see, we do.
They have to be submitted, they're reviewing those.
No, it does have to, it does have that. It's the first Friday in March was the decision, so that's what'll be come before you at the next meeting.
What I would say is change that, that line to say, applications are due by the first day of March.
Yes.
Great catch.
The, the original, the original proposal was March first, and then after we were there, it was like, it was decided the first Friday, so.
Do you really think the thirty days is enough? From beginning to submit, if you've got third-party people that you want quotes and bids and architectural drawings or something from, it's not enough time.
It seems. We're gonna start promoting it this month, so there'll be promotions going out in January saying, hey, this is what we did this last year. This is coming open, it's, the application's gonna open up, you know, February first, so we're gonna start getting those, um, notices and, um.
If people are on the ball and they know.
January, yeah.
They had it all year.
Well, it's all reimbursement too, so if they haven't got out of pockets already have that done, this is just really a reimbursement application more than anything, right? Well, plus we gotta approve the project.
Right, the approval process has to go through the approval process once, and if they are approved, and then it goes before it's in.
It is open a year now too, and it, this is kinda standardizes all those, um, dates.
Okay, as long as people know.
Yeah, and I think year after year, as we continue with this and word spreads more, but I think that when the committee was talking about it, the, is having those set dates every year. It opens the first of February, the application process is open, you know, um, till that first Friday in March.
Normalize those dates.
And if we have, if we're consistent and keep it the same year after year, I think as it catches on, more and more people realize, and then if they do come up with projects throughout the year, um, they can be ready to go and apply it when it's open. It might take a few years to really kick off and, you know, to get word out, but I think, um, hopefully we'll get more.
Mayor Proton, can I request being on that committee? The possible.
I, I was.
Mayor, I can be on a committee?
Um, well, committee's already established right now, but we can discuss, um, yeah, reconsider that too, who's on that? Well, no, actually, no, for, wait, are we talking about a beautification committee or are we talking about the?
The, the.
This, this. No, I think this one's mandated by the, um, R C W on who's, who gets on that or not. And it's one of the only ones we have.
What? Sorry.
Yeah. Because of. So, you know, are we talking about the beautification?
No, there's no R C.
You should know, we're, yes. I'm, I was thinking about the other committee that, um, sorry, I, my head's somewhere else, I, I'll see.
So you're saying there's a chance.
There is a chance, there is a chance. Yeah, I'll.
If there's a chance, it would just be good for my heart to be on the committee, and I promise I won't be any trouble.
You promise?
I promise.
I promise.
I'll be really good.
Might not be what you think it is. I'm just saying.
Well, then I could quit.
Because it's not, it's not about what we want.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's not about what, what.
It's whatever application.
Yeah, it's about the application. We don't have input or say.
But you want it?
No, I don't.
Oh. So I'm just saying, it's not maybe what you think.
Yeah, I, I think we already discussed who was on it before, but we can relook at it, we can, we can relook at it.
Who's on it? Obviously you are.
I'm on it.
Who else? Um, we have the building official.
Yeah.
Uh, finance director, the mayor, myself, and the mayor pro town.
And.
Our, no.
I, I, I did believe.
I know you just don't trust me.
The logic would to have one council member and.
Yeah.
Pro town was on it, um, makes sense, I mean. I, I use the mayor pro town in a lot of things, if I'm asking for like council thoughts or opinions on something, um, because she's appointed or elected by the council, I feel like she's a good voice for the council.
She represents us.
So, yeah. So that's one of the reasons why it's all initially for this committee.
Okay, so like I said, minor changes, as we go through, there's, I'm not gonna go through the whole application, because you guys have already approved all of this. Mostly it's just a matter of cleaning up those dates, um. The other thing is, as we did discuss, and the committee wanted to request to make sure they submitted an application of the current area with their application that wasn't in there previously, so, um, we're gonna be asking for that, and then the. I believe that was all for the application process. If we get to the reimbursement request form, we've made a few changes to that one. Um. Reimbursements, if reimbursements will not be processed if all items are not included, that was important, because if, when they're submitting their applications, when they're submitting one thing here, one thing there, it gets really time-consuming for staff to track those and then follow up and, you know, get, make sure everything, so if they don't submit all of the required documents, they're very clearly spelled out, we're gonna reject the whole package and say, no. You gotta, until they send, submit everything, um, and then adding language, what is proof of payment? Um, an invoice isn't really proof of payment, we need to have you there, the cancel check with, you know, we can, um, redact the account number and stuff, of course, or credit card receipt or something, showing that that invoice was paid. And then photos of the projects.
So then again, it's an understanding of you do the work first, and if you turn in your homework, you'll get the money back.
Read the instructions and submit the information, yes. So the other thing that we asked for in the reimbursement was a recap of the project that includes how it was completed, um, benefits gained by the neighborhood, and so that was a little bit confusing to some people, and so we just were adding lines in the request for reimbursement, so they can write it right in that request, so it's not a separate item for them to include. Um, and really, that's it, just other than.
So if reimbursement gets rejected, they just pay for the project on their pocket, yeah?
Well, as long as they have everything in by.
Yeah, they're already done.
As long as they turn in all their documents.
And they did what they say they were gonna do.
Yeah, yeah.
Kinda know what you're getting involved in, it's not money first, it's project first and then money.
So, John.
I'll say, I was working on some this week and saw their mural and it sucked compared to, you know. I'm like, that's lame, ours is way better. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else on the beautification grant updates?
Going, going, gone, thank you.
These will come before you at the next meeting, because you did approve the application process, um, even though they're minor changes, we still want them to, you know, they'll, they'll still come before you.
So first Friday of March and then we'll be good, okay.
Yes. So also spread the word, if you have friends, family, or, you know, people in the community you talk to that you think might benefit from the beautification grant project, when you're out and about, maybe talk to them and let them know that this is available and it's gonna be coming open and, um, you know, we'll also be advertising it and letting people know.
Thank you.
Alright, Algiers Drive Closure.
We're discussion.
Yeah, so council obviously asked for this, uh, presentation, uh, sending us documents about prices and all that, I believe. Geez, what it will cost, um, so Cody, you wanna give a bit of a, a little bit of background on what happened with this property? Um, I wanna spin around all the law and what, what they want, what we want, or, not what we want, but some of the background information, please.
Yeah, um, so I know I handed up the sheets and I'm gonna do everything, every teacher's not supposed to do until you're not to look at them for a second, and I thought, because you're gonna get confused. Um, so the, how this property came, we talked about this, but I just wanna go through it. Um, when this property was platted and the property south, meaning they became and they formed, um, they wanted a private street to have access, so they asked for a private road, because it's not a built-up city standards, we allowed it, but it became, it stayed private, which means it was divided among all the parcels. So if you look at this on a parcel map, it goes down, straight down the road on every parcel, so every parcel has a piece of it. They created a B O A or an H O A for businesses, um, a business association to maintain the road. Um, the agreement with that was that the road would be maintained to provide access to fire, um, utility vehicles, and that was, that's what the agreement was. The fact that it was open to the public was a benefit, but it wasn't something they were required to do, but they had to maintain access to pri, um, for fire, emergency services and utilities. So as long as they could continue to do that, and that can be done several different ways, some people put ballards in, some people put breakaway chains, some people put lock boxes with a Knox box that we can have access to, anything like that, as long as we can have access. So now the road is closed, they didn't wanna have public access, but there's still access for emergency vehicles, you look on the Algiers side, it's a breakaway chain. On the other side, there's a lock that we have a key to. So that's how we are okay with them doing what they did. That's how we got to this point, we are at now. Questions?
Why does it need emergency vehicle access?
So in this field, so anytime there's a road that has any, our code requires private roads to have emergency vehicle access and reason, just any time you can give more ways for emergency vehicles to get somewhere, it's a benefit. Specifically for those roads, they have resuscitated people in those fields, um, different people that passed out or whatever, they had to resuscitate fire trucks especially. So having that access just proves that there's a reason to have that emergency access, but it's also our code requires private roads to have emergency access.
How many lots are there? Is it four?
Yeah, I think there's four total, five if you add the, the Dairy Queen connection that comes up into that.
Okay, thank you.
I say Dairy Queen, but it's that whole strip mall stuff, yes.
Right.
Looking at, uh, your assumptions here, are we talking about this is a seven hundred and eighty-foot, uh, road that's thirty-two feet wide?
You wanna talk about this sheet? Yeah, so going to the sheet, you can look at the sheet now, um, how we got, how we got these past estimates. If we used Mossman that we just finished, right, Mossman. If we used Mazman that we just finished, right, Mazman was just finished, we used the unit prices from Mazman and applied it to this road to our best of our knowledge. Again, this is a rough figure, if we drill down into it, we could probably get the price slightly lower, um but it was just based on what we used for Mazman. Uh so would you looking at a seven hundred eighty feet of length from the road end to road end? Um with center lines, that's how much payment you have to put in there. Uh this is not calculating the little divot that goes down to the Dairy Queen area, and it doesn't count the other divot that goes down to the post office. So those would stay private, those connections, we wouldn't build those for them, normally you don't do that. Um if you look through this, the unit prices, you probably, some of you might have already figured it out. LS is lump sum, CY is cubic yard, TN is ton, um EA is each. And then you have square yard and cubic, or I think that linear foots on there too. Someone asked for a price estimate of how much it would cost to build that road, so that's why we created a price estimate. If you remember, I said it'd be a minimum of six hundred fifty thousand, based on what I knew, if we did a lot of the work in house. This is if you got everything done third party.
And Blair, just to to kinda get to remind you of the processes last um. Last month, there was uh. Brought up about the fact that this road was going to get closed and that there was discussion about going ahead and accepting. Businesses, they said, hey, we'll give you the strip plan and. I I know that I'm one who, I know I'm one who said, I'd like to have a cost estimate before we started, before we started discussion because. Um for seven hundred eighty feet, one point five million dollars estimate. Now, I I I'll make it clear, I'm against even considering. Accepting that, they need to bring it up to standard because even in their BOA. I bet if we dig down in their BOA, they will have both have failed at maintaining what they even agreed to on the BOA. And so that's not, that's not good use of public funds.
That has nothing to do with the public, though.
I'm talking about us taking it and saying, yeah, we'll gladly take your your little. Uh private road and we'll spend one point five million dollars, bring it up to city code, just for seven hundred eighty feet when that one point five million. Where are we going to take it out of the budget? Are we going to not uh purchase two new police cars? Are we not going to hire a new police officer? Are we going to cut? Positions that were just brought on board, where are we gonna find this one point five million dollars?
That's why you have to look.
Just bring this so we would know how much it was or.
No, no, this literally how much this.
Because it's part of the decision process and like, well, how much is this gonna cost? Again, just say, yeah, let's do it.
We don't know how much they want for the property, right, or oh, they're gonna give it to us.
So the when we weren't, and nothing was signed or formalized, but they did mention that they would gladly cede the right of way to us to build the road. Um just to know, for knowledge of that, though, too, is that. There still has to be surveying done, there has to be recording those documents, so that has to come from somewhere too.
So it's not shovel ready? You guys use all these fancy terms. So it's designed ready?
It's not even design ready, because we don't even have the right of way.
They're just giving us the right of way, not the property.
Nothing is official, you guys. Conversation.
To me, the three owners should probably dig through their BOA and consider legal action against the board. And it's not our damn business.
Not that that's my view as well, is that there, this here is for us to even go along with it. Because what we will do is we will, for seventy eight, seven hundred and eighty feet, we'll pay one point five million dollars, and yes, it'll give a. Small seven hundred eighty foot stretch of road for people to drive through, but those businesses, those business owners, we just gifted them. At taxpayer cost, something that will improve their businesses that they will also benefit from greatly.
Benefit citizens of Yell for having another side street to use. To make public.
And what I, what and then.
So now we're jamming up Creek Street and all the other streets that we, we need more side streets to put cars on.
I understand.
We need arterials, we can't have everybody jammed up on five oh seven. Every little bit helps. That's the main, that's.
Okay, so is it worth two police cars?
You could say that about a million other things, there's money in the budget you can find.
If we take this, we've gotta.
Yeah, you can find that anywhere, but I'm saying streets are valuable, it's important to have streets to get people around in the city. This is a street that's used a lot by a lot of people, by the public, that I didn't even know was a private road. And if I was a business owner there, yeah, it makes no sense for me to fix this up and let the public use it. Make zero sense as a business owner for that.
Well, unless the public comes to your business, then it's.
Right, but they have other access.
But the issue, ninety percent of the use of that road is the post office. The guy that owns the po- property with the post office doesn't wanna spend money. So at the end, this isn't our problem. This is, those other three owners that are part of that BOA need to review their BOA, consider getting a lawyer and suing that guy.
Well, what are the other three people going to do if we just wash our hands of it? They're not developing, it's just.
It's gonna remain closed.
It's gonna remain closed until they decide that they wanna build something else in that area.
And that might be what happens too, I mean, I'm not trying to say they're ten or anything, but. They might be either trying to have us purchase it to build up, and in that case, you know, you might just be building it up for for those businesses.
What happens is if we take the land, we build this road. They're then gonna build businesses where I want that way.
And that's what we want.
We say, no.
You want everything on five oh seven?
I'm not subsidizing one point five million dollars. For some property owners to build up more rental business space.
We want to push away business. Unless you're on five oh seven, you can have your business on five oh seven, but we don't wanna encourage businesses to come off.
We could subsidize this all day if that's you want, Josh.
Well, maybe we can get a grant for this. Cody, can we, can we apply for a grant for that?
There's quite a few empty commercial spaces now. Not like four years ago, four years ago, there wasn't a single empty one, now, there's a few of them. They're not empty because businesses don't wanna come here. They're empty because the property owners here are charging on the ass.
I'm talking about one strip in particular.
I mean, I don't think there's many.
No, just in general, those ones, I think there's one or two of them.
Where the CrossFit gym is.
Yes. There's one or two open in there, and it's the same thing, they're charging almost two thousand dollars a month for the medium sized units.
Wonder what kind of businesses are building, so the builders, I mean, the owners are gonna build.
So this is because, I mean, you brought all this, right, thank you, so if. It's just, yeah, it's just for informational.
Right, cuz you.
If somebody felt strongly enough and they wanted to get it on. Gender something.
Go in the public work, I wish I think you're on. Have those people on those documenting um vote to. That's the case, yeah, we'll go through. This is just for right now, um and I'm getting a mixed feeling from most people here. Uh I'm getting like half and half, I'm not really sure, is there anyone really adamant that this doesn't happen?
I mean, in in the aspect of what we're talking about right now, yeah, but. Prior to even doing that, like I was, I'd like us to get a copy of this BOA. And have someone competent and knows what.
I I don't know if we can get that.
It should be public record.
Fact that the post office is like a state agency. Makes no difference in the fact that they should have ingress and egress and multiple ways in and out.
I I chat with the postmaster, they're looking at their contract currently, um but I hadn't heard back from them else before Christmas, so. Um probably three weeks ago, I don't know.
There's no regulations because it's a public.
I'm sure there's some, well, I don't know.
Maybe we could, maybe that could be part of the legislative ask.
What?
Get the feds to pay for it, since the the most the use for.
Like our state legislative, uh we don't have federal, um. And we can bring it up to our person.
But you know what I mean, it's not just like a grocery store.
Because odd that they have a private.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
I'm sure it's a long term leases.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, yeah, I just think it's.
And how much would that do to have to pitch in to fix the roads to our standards?
Is the the idea that I have is one point five, that's government costs. Private costs are way less than that.
But we're government, though.
I know.
That, but that's also.
Oh, it for them to just.
What he also says, this is if we paid someone else to do.
But are some of those owners construction people with heavy equipment?
Can we start off?
Private construction is always a lot cheaper than government, because you have to pay.
So we could just hire their.
He wants to get the BOA and then discuss it.
We can do their BOA, um I think there's a portion of this could be discussed in the executive session for discussing purchasing it. Um property wise and all that stuff, we'll obviously have to clear that with our attorney, make sure we're.
I'm kinda interested in what kind of footing we have. To push the button for them to get it done.
One, does have people through committee first, I mean, I'm just, I'm asking.
Oh, it sounds like you guys are split pretty good, I mean, is there anyone who would be opposed to this going to the committee? You discuss further?
I think the road's important.
You'll go to the public.
It is, yeah, it's important, this is one piece of the puzzle. I'm gonna say, what's?
I will say.
Me and Josh.
Okay, yeah, so the three of you wanna bring it forward, obviously you have one for adamant against, one against, and one for. I don't know your standing, Carrie, but you're probably gonna make the decision.
I lean towards doing something with it.
I have no problem coming to, coming through, doing the process, but when we hit the city council. I will be, I'll gladly state right now, one point five million dollars for seventy, seven hundred and eighty feet. Is not effective use of taxpayer money.
And I agree with you, but we'll, we'll bring it up through that process.
But uh one way couplet, so one million dollars is.
And plus, we're reading parking for that, for the downtown area.
No, I'm not against this, I'm just saying.
Are we talking about parking meters as part of this?
But that's money coming from a different.
I mean, right now.
First question, is it, the first question I would, no, want to approve is, is there. Is it worthwhile, ignore the cost, is there a worthwhile road to have for the city?
Yeah, I think it is, I do think it is, and I think.
Costs is part of it, but that's not the first question we should answer, first question we answered, is it even something that is? Really worthwhile for the city to sue? Like the city should have this, it's like important to people.
I wanna answer that, but I'm gonna answer it very specific, cuz I know there's a lot of people. The road is important for the city, as in. People that live here, not the city, that's where I'm at, it's an, it's a, it's a good road to have. Because right now, getting in and out of there is an issue. So I get it, but I don't wanna jump straight to, hey, let's take the property and fix the road. What I, what I, what I wanna do right now, what why I said it, first step, I wanna hopefully, let's get a copy of this BOA. Have someone review it that knows what the heck they're looking for. I'm trying, man. Have someone review it, see if we have any footing to push the issue for them to get it done.
I like the way you think, we can do this, but if you wanna look.
If if there's any kind of agreement, something, whatever, that they didn't do, that they were supposed to do.
Private road, that's between them, well.
Look, how about this, we do some back work, see if there's any um legal footing we have. Um any pressure we can put on them from the city to fix it or whatever like that, or um ask our attorney, bring it to the public works committee. They can decide whether it's, you know, oh yeah, we can do it or not. Go to the council at another study session and then put it on agenda if that's what council decides.
Well, I think we also need a representative from them, the BOA.
That was the next was, okay, fine, we can't do anything. But with the three that are willing to do something. And see what we can do to help them.
Yeah.
Get it done.
Yeah, you say one point five, like, well, that's.
Kind of the way I outlined, and then as a backup, do that, or do you wanna? I I would, how would you like to proceed?
I think first steps is get that. BOA.
We can do that.
Have someone review it that knows.
Our attorney review it, okay?
Figure out where. What, what the.
The reason why I say we need to do that is because homeowners associations, they have the same thing. Homeowner associations, I can speak for one that I, that's defunct, even though it's uh where I live, is responsible for two storm drains. If those two storm drains all of a sudden fail, and the city goes in and inspects them and goes, hey, it's gonna cost money to fix these. Then the, cuz there's no homeowner association, every house. If they can't figure out a private contractor to come out and fix them, and the city fixes them, every house in that area gets a lien put against it. For the repairs. And so that's a violation of the HOA that we didn't maintain the property that was supposed to be maintained. So same thing with the BOA, if somewhere in there is the statement of. We will have a private road and we will maintain this private road to a certain standard. They shut it down because they failed to do that, that's what, that's their, they have to own up to that. Which means that, hey, if the repercussion is. The city found due to a safety factor that you can't have that road like that, but you have it in there that you said you would maintain. Go in, fix it, and put the lien on their property.
This is where we get, we're getting into legal stuff, that's not my purview, that's not yours or anyone sitting here.
Right, we have a plan moving. The the plan is Cody's, Cody's gonna get the BOA, Joe's gonna have our attorney look at it, see if there's any. This is my understanding, there's any way possible that the city could put pressure on them or something to.
What actions, yeah.
What, any type of actions, then. Also, you three, bring it to public, I think you're on the public. And see if you want it to get more information in.
Public service, when, what dates? Well, I'm telling you the next meeting.
We'll do it for this one, if we can, we will do it the next one.
And then also. If at public services, then how representative, will all of them wanna come for discussion?
We can ask them, but I can't make them.
Well, I know, you can't make them, but ask them if they would. So we get their things, they're the owner of it, they should.
But would we wanna have a discussion first, just, I don't know.
I think it's part of decision making and negotiation, I think. No, nothing's decided, but I mean, it helps with. There is conversation that will affect negotiations down the road.
Possibly.
Everything's negotiable.
Are we done with that?
I hope so.
Yeah, next. Has anything changed?
Anything changed in? It's a whole new year.
Has anything changed in the bees from last beach schedule meeting?
We'll talk about that.
She might, you might have already, you have.
But mine's has two pages, so I'll take.
Okay, that should be, uh, is there one more down there we need?
Terry needs one.
But you okay? Okay, I have a couple more half, but I don't wanna give them to you now because I know how that goes, um. So the first thing you have in front of you, I'm gonna little brief the other council members when I come back, is just a cost estimate. This was done by our communications and recreation coordinator, um with some input from different departments about.
This was done by our communications recreation coordinator, um, with some input from different departments about what it costs the city. In terms of time that wouldn't normally be spent when an event tries to come in. So you can see those under there, and we took two events, we just took a generic event at City Park, we didn't name any single one. Um, and then we took the movie event at Long Meyer that happens on a regular. Um, so you can see kind of where the costs lie with what we're planning to charge at the top. The breakdown of everything below, and then what the net loss to the city is. Again, our only stressor here is, this is a service we're providing and trying to recoup some of that costs. Right, council's decision or what council wants to do is if you wanna subsidize those costs for these events, that is totally your decision. It's just us showing you what the difference is in us trying to recoup some of that cost. That's all we are trying to provide you with here. So I want you to look at this, is there any questions about anything on here or how we came up with these numbers? Why is it cost bathrooms all day so much? Yeah, so the bathrooms all day usually on a, most events take place on a Saturday, so we assume this would be a Saturday event. Um, we normally don't have staff s- sitting at City Park managing the bathrooms all day. They rotate between all the parks, we have one guy or one girl on a Saturday that does all the parks. When an event happens, we put two people at that park to manage bathrooms and trash. Because it's just how it works, the, they generate a bathroom usage, a lot of trash usage, number one complaint we get is. Why are the bathrooms dirty or the trash is overflowing? Because what people won't do is they won't go to the event coordinator. And say, hey, event coordinator, cause they can't find him, hey, you need to help with the trash and bathrooms, they go, city, your trash and bathrooms look like trash. Can you come fix them? And so we just now staff those all with two people and we know there's an event. Regardless if that event has volunteers or not, because they don't always have volunteers. So that's where that bathroom and trash, it's two people, eight hours at those events. Any other questions? So this is before you, two council members that came back, is just a cost city cost estimate. For an event, a normal Saturday event, and then uh, the Long Meyer movie event that we normally hold on. And you can see what the price is that we have on top, along with what the city loses. The net loss to the city, how much were the city is subsidizing these events? And the, right, the only goal of this is to make sure you guys are aware of that, um, next.
The extra mowing, is that just because you go in and mow the day before and mowing is actually maybe scheduled on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Correct, so normally we mow the parks, we mow them twice a week. We normally add in a third day if there's an event coming up this Saturday, we mow the day before on Friday, most time we mow on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we add in an extra mow day for those events, same with uh, Long Meyer especially. The movies not as much, that's why you don't see any extra prep, you, we do a little bit of extra mowing, but not much for the movies. For the other events like baseball, football, we do mow before those events happen to keep fresh grass.
Yes, why do you do an extra mow?
We always mow right before the event. We like to, we like to keep it nice and cut clean, if you ever played baseball with the grass is a little shaggy. No, but we do, so for the mowing on these events, a lot of these times they'll have uh, different things up, tents, tarts. Um, things on the field, we wanna get the grass cut as low as possible, people laying on the grass, so we always just do an extra move before they come out, so they get clean. Do we have to do that? No, it's just something we do to make it. Yeah, it may be there, um, next up. There's a lot of these, take, there's a, it's a three pay or four pigs thing, this is the, somebody asked for the permit application, when someone does a park, just grab one and pass it down, it's four, four pages. Yeah. Someone asked about this, this is the permit application, um, this would be what someone would fill out when they want to do an event. The reason we had this is because it specifically has rules about the park, usage of the park, what you get, what you don't get, it very. Specifies what you're allowed to do and not do, I know there was confusion between council about, well, if I rent the park, what do I get?
Right.
So that's, it really breaks down kind of what you get and what your things are going towards. And this is park, not community center. This is, yeah, this is just any park, any park in the cities. So you can keep that, that's for you, um.
You can't smoke, unless you have authority to smoke in the park.
Yeah, so there is no tobacco use on city park ground, so you notice people, yeah. I know, so you notice like even, it's same like school district, school district can notice the employees last walk off. Um, and then there's one other thing, we didn't print out copies of these, but you can pass this around, this is what the school district charges, so there's one thing, well. Taxpayers fund this, why do we, we should, no one should get charged, taxpayer funded. I also, every school district we looked at, we pulled up Young Community Schools and what they charge for use of their facility per hour, so you can see that this is also a tax. Payer funded thing that they also turn for their use, so you can just look, scan it and pass it down.
Yeah, ask, when you grabbed that, does it say when it was last revised?
Yeah, you can rent the gym, but it costs per hour, and then you can notice on the back, here's the really cool thing on the back. Is no matter what, they charge you custodian cleaning fees.
Yeah, yeah, cause I've tried to rent schools before.
You don't get it back, there's no deposit, there's nothing to get back, you get charged this cleaning fee regardless.
The, I, I see why these all organization group would buy their own dumpster for any event over five hundred people. We're talking about the dumpster, like, the truck backs it up, drops it and goes away.
Yeah, have they been more pours or garbage cans, so barbecue rally provided all their own garbage cans, they had all the garbage cans picked up. Um, one of the events, the. Jazz Fest brought a, I know Jazz Fest did not.
What happens with the garbage?
They, they came and picked up, they moved them all, well, I have help, we moved them all to the area and they came and picked them all up.
What about the bags of trash?
Yeah.
The man picks them up.
Yeah, they may pick them all up, like they don't leave out, it stays in there and they go with the cans.
Oh, you, you're talking when May comes and drops like the big cans.
They're like, are they fifty gallon?
Yeah, they're big fifty gallons and then they.
Yeah, there's like, we have like twenty. No, no, those ones are still there too, and they, and so it happened like, that event, they serviced those trashcans. The people there volunteer service those trashcans, and they have the extra trashcans for that, so it handled all the trash. Other events, there was one event, I can't remember what it was often, I don't wanna say it was somebody, they brought a dumpster in and just threw all the trash bags in the dumpster so they didn't fill apart. City sponsored events will normally bring, use our own dumpster and haul stuff back.
If you're just wanting to reserve. One of the covered bench areas for a birthday party, you gotta fill out all this. That's thinking, I wanna separate that from.
This.
Or quite a bit.
Yeah, this is a community, a community, that's the key with this one, it's a community event, right? We don't allow, um, res- reserving the park for a private event, you can't go, I'm taking the whole park and reserving it for a private event, no one's coming. These have to be community events, that's part of the situation. Um, the next thing is, we didn't, so the fees have stayed the same. Nothing has changed, I know you guys have read them ad nauseam, but I have them here so you can pass them around, just to look at them again, the fees are exactly the same. The only thing you'll notice we changed and two hundred dollar project, there's confusion if the five hundred was with the two hundred dollar closet. Or if the five hundred was without the two hundred dollar closet. So I know you've looked at that, and that's the thing, so I, really, we just wanted to show you the city costs. Of what it costs to run an event on average, not, they're all not exactly the same, but this is the cost, what the net loss is to the city, what we. You, the council, the city are subsidizing for these events, um, and then just, it's your decision what to do, right? We don't. The city is just providing you the information, council, you have the joy of making the super easy decision about whether you're gonna charge or not for the park.
One of the confusions and reference to this whole theme thing is the, I want to reserve and rent. For my child's birthday party. And yet nowhere on here, and we asked, I, I think I even asked, is, are we looking at when we're renting the park? Are we only looking at for the whole park, or are we looking at, hey, there's this pavilion area, I wanna use it for my son's birthday. And so what's it cost me to rent that? And if that rent is the five hundred dollars compared to having the whole park. That's where I had a little bit of confusion of why are we charging somebody who's gonna use the whole park versus somebody who's gonna use a small portion of the park.
I thought I answered it, I didn't, is um, it's, this is for community events for the whole public, a private event is first come, first served basis.
So, okay, so we're looking at, right now, we're not discussing the birthday parties. Uh, the team wants to do a big celebration and pizza party or anything else like that, we're looking at, uh. Bobby made, Bobby Joe decides, hey, I wanna have a car rally, and we're going to rent the park to do the car.
As long as that car rally is open to the public?
Yes, no, that's what I meant, okay.
That's all we're, so these are community events, that's literally what we're looking at for, this is the park fees, right? Not the community center, this is park fees. And just to clarify, these park fees, and if you rent the whole park for a community open event, that includes the community center during that event. Okay, that was, I know confusion part there too, so if you rent the park for a community event. Yes. Lynn and I went back and forth on this, but that's the idea is that this would be, because you're renting the park for the community event, you should also get the community center. Why would you have an open public event all around a community center, someone's in there? But isn't it almost cheaper to rent the park than just the community center? Yeah, that's the idea, because you're doing a public community event, you're still benefiting the public. Why wouldn't someone just rent the community center? Because it has to be an open public event, so you can't have your.
Have your wedding, do something.
You do have a, a that gets open, once, whatever, like, the chamber wants to, to run it for, you know. Their monthly thing, wouldn't it be cheaper just to rent the whole park? The monthly thing's not open to the public, though, it's you have to. Yeah, so she's not all day, yeah. So it, yeah, you're getting all, like, if you had a, yes, you had a wedding, you're like, I want everybody from the public to come to my wedding, and I'm gonna have food for all, yes, you could rent the entire park. If you're gonna do an all day event, you can save, save a hundred bucks, save a hundred dollars, congratulations.
So we'll talk about the last, the last meeting that uh, city council meeting that we had, and we had the guy from the Boy Scouts, uh. Where he was talking, so his, I think his dilemma was that the community center was so.
I think that's next.
Then.
Next, I'm gonna pass around a waiver request form that was asked for, this will be, so we had the stars on the bottom. But we'll actually include at the behest of a certain city clerk. Um, we will include this in the ordinance or the resolutions, that way that is clear and you can definitely see it. Right, which makes total, it makes sense to do that, so I'm gonna pass this around so you can see. So anyone that has any Boy Scout troop, any nonprofit, um, that felt like their event was. Too expensive to do it here, and they wanted to do something for the community, could submit a request on waiver request. And council would be the approval on that.
That was mentioned in the meeting as well, that there was gonna be a waiver, and that was up to council to approve, but I think everybody kinda missed that.
Yeah, and so that's gonna come around now, so. I think you explained that wrong, though, the waiver request is administered if one goes.
So on this, then can this be changed to say that it includes the community center? Because I, I did not realize that at all.
Yeah, we can have, we can, well. This community center, it's the whole community center, yeah.
How come it's not that same way for Long Meyer Park then?
Long Meyer Park works a little differently, um, the, when you do it, we haven't had many events at Long Meyer Park. Where the entire park is taken up, normally it's a baseball field here, a football field here. There was one of, and they didn't use the whole park, they just used the football field, that's why we separated those, because oftentimes you'll have a. Baseball team come in, but then like a mom's group will rent out the kitchen to sell hot dogs that day. It's not the baseball team normally renting out the kitchen, sometimes they are, sometimes they're not, so it rotates with who's doing that, it just has worked differently that way. Tournaments, we have done that, where we include um, a fee, so like the Nisqually Basin had a tournament, we did a fee for the entire park. That included the kitchen, so we can add that in there, but it's not a set thing where you rent the park and get the whole thing. It's a little different with sports fields and just how they save them versus the park.
Thank you.
For our farmer's market, um, would they use this waiver form to get a reduced, potentially reduced fee? For the community center, hold like ongoing event, or how is that gonna be looked at?
Well, this is talking about the park, the community center is a little different. We have, we have a fee schedule already for the community center, the new fee schedule just provided a nonprofit rate, which that's what the farmer market would fall under, would be a nonprofit rate for the community center.
And how much is that?
Yeah, what is category one, category two?
Category one is city of young groups, so it's anyone from the city, so if council member has, wanna do an open house. Um, for all the public to come to and listen to him talk about streets, that will be a city sponsored event. Not that you wanna do that, but if we wanna do a vaccine clinic, uh, if we wanted to do. If you wanted to do a COVID testing site. If you wanna do a young community services, where they had a bunch of stuff there and provided, you know, help to people. Like where we had an outreach fair, that could be that kinda thing. Group two is verified nonprofits, so they have to be. Very, yeah, they have to be.
How much is the community center rental for a nonprofit?
Uh, fifty dollars an hour, yeah, fifty dollars an hour.
So the pa- farmer's market is ten to three, ten, five, that's two hundred fifty dollars every time.
They start normally earlier, they normally come at less.
That's open to the public.
So two hundred fifty dollars per weekend, or they could, they could waiver and ask for a better price. Because it's an open thing, so the farmer's market could do that. Yeah, it's open.
That would be like. The city council, the historic commission, the creative director.
Not just groups within the city. So, here, here's one, what's farmer's market paying per week right now? Nothing, so we're gonna ask them to go from paying nothing to probably five hundred dollars a week. They can't afford that.
Yeah, they can't.
No.
But we, I wouldn't wanna lose that public event.
Don't, so then we'd have them fill out that.
They would be, do a waiver situation and come and talk to whoever's in charge. They can't do that because they don't have bathrooms and all that other stuff, and then you can't. They don't have the right infrastructure.
One way, at the activated one ways.
Right.
Is be able to bring in that capability of doing street fairs and doing things.
But we're not ready yet for that. I would just say they need to come and make a waiver, some kind, or some special fee, I mean, because it's kinda bridges both, it is a community event. It's something we've worked years for to get going where it is.
So we never did discuss, these are one offs, for the most part. Jazz festivals, one time a year.
Yeah.
But it, they're one time a year, whereas farmer's market is weekly for X amount of months.
That is, um. Including Indy Park rentals, um, your request form, where it says, I don't have one in front of me, but it. Uh, this is for one off event, where you're not monopolizing the space for multiple weeks in a row. Okay, I don't have it right in front of me.
So who would they come to talk to?
But I mean, they don't get, there's no, I guess, I never thought about that aspect of it, there's no. Just, like I said, I get Jazz Festival, Mermaid Festival, all that, it's just. It's one time a year, whereas the farmer's market is, is once a week or whatever it is, four months, five months. And we never talked about like a discount, you know, uh, if, if you're gonna rent this space for X amount. You know what I'm saying? I don't know, we never talked about that, I never thought about that, so.
So if I remember correctly, one of the, it was either the study session. Or during one of the council meetings, it brought up that we are going, we are trying to find a way to move the farmer's market. Out of that and get them somewhere else, because the city was losing. Uh, the capability of events that wanted the community center, that were willing to pay the full price. And so, you know, but because we made it so that they could have it every Saturday.
It blocked everybody else, so.
And so that's why we're trying to find a way, and again, it comes down to the two streets, that we can get those uh, taken care of quickly and get it done, and that. Also push them out there.
I think it just becomes the health department, you have to have water, bathrooms, of, and a handicap access, there's all of those. Things that you have to have, we'd have to talk with the managers, I don't know the details.
So my, my question is, why does, I'll play the, the, what some people like. Um, ask some questions, why does the farmer's market get special treatment?
It was agreed upon, the previous, uh, the previous administration, it was agreed upon to give them so many years. Free access so that they could build up the clientele, they could build up the business. That, that is what, um, I, I asked about that. And last year was the last year of that. This year is the first year that they actually have to. Pay. And so they've had three years to build up their clientele, build up the. Hey, everybody comes and be able to prove a proof of concept that yes, they are a worthwhile element that they. Whether you wanna call it profit where they break even, that they're able to do that. And so now that's one of the things that we as a city council are gonna have to try to figure out is how are we going to, are we going to allow them to continue? Or we turn to, as it was brought to our attention, that there are people who want to do weddings, who want to do other events. That the community center was built for. And advertised for and everything and gone against the two times voted on by the public.
What?
This community center.
Yeah, yeah.
Two times the public said, no, we don't want this. And finally somebody said, okay, well, here's the square footage, just enough that the public doesn't have to get involved. We're building it and part of the advertisement and the thing of it was. This is gonna be where wedding venues can be done. We're gonna be able to bring in all these things like conventions and all this other stuff. And so this year is gonna be our first year dealing with the farmer's market of. Do we continue to give, you know, is that the benefit or do we wanna look at all the other ones that wanna?
There is a contract we've had in the past, but years, the reason we haven't been getting money from them is they haven't reached thresholds, so ten thousand dollar threshold. Uh they say they have making that ten thousand dollars each year. That's why we're not making money. So I don't know about the handshake ingredients you're referring to and all that stuff. But what it is now is we could have done this last year too. Um I don't know about the um about the the waiver and fees and all that stuff, but um. Where we're at now is regardless of that farmer's market and I appreciate twenty doubles acting and all that. Um the positives and negatives of having a farmer's market, but we're not just dealing with a farmer's market here. Um it's all these groups. We gotta look at a holistic approach. You're not just.
That's why we end towards.
In this way, it's the most fair for everybody in whether you fit in, fit into it or not. I mean, you, we can say that there's, you know, certain groups and events that are better than others or or betterment for their community and all that. But this is the most fair way to standardize these fees. If if we don't standardize and we have that, what we've had for years and years where. As the mayor, you know, say, oh, you're a great group. I like your group. Let's let's give it to you for free or whatever. That's not right. That's why we put it in here. Where if, you know, there's only A, B, and C you can fit into um for for that waiver. You don't meet meet all those requirements. You don't get it. It's not just me saying, you know, cause you're a buddy of mine or I like this group or I don't like this group. Yet or don't get it. You have to fit a certain mold. And if if they don't disagree, if they disagree with my decision, they go to the council and the council will decide. Well, you did, you followed A, B, or C or you didn't, and you make a decision there. Other than that, everyone's got a, I mean, my thing, you gotta pay something, you gotta have it standardized for everybody.
No, I think they're being, they'd be willing to pay something, but I think it's big.
It's the same thing. It's a fairness. That's why, that's my question again that is a fairness, cause they are a group of a collection of small business owners. Selling their wares. There are many events at the park of that's the exact same thing. A collection of small business owners selling their wares.
For all the kids at school with the pop program and all that good stuff. Partnered nonprofit to the benefit of the city and the kids in the community.
Just wanna remind people why we're having this discussion again about the fees is because the individual that came to the city council meeting about utilization, which we have the waiver. So that's a different concept. That's a difference. Now we're talking about outside that, did anybody from the farmer's market uh attend that city council meeting, show up and and share any of their feelings?
Well, they were, they reached out to me.
Okay, that's good. And so as long as there's people that are sharing their their, you know, expression of like, you know, I I don't, I'm, if you talk to them, that's great. And we can have a conversation. But I was really impressed with people showing up at the meeting. And I'm like, that's, that's the only reason I'm having this because that gentleman showed up and and so if we gotta expand upon that, then we do. Um but yeah, I love, I love this, where this is going, but I just wanna make sure that my dude represented with the waiver and not easy there. This is another conversation with the farmer's market, so let's.
We had those conversations too with the farmer's market. We decided, so right after our last council meeting. Um we met with them and that was part of the reason, you know, I I like to have seen this completely last year. Again, that's what it impacted, that that conversation so. Um whether or not they can go ahead and move forward impacted um. At the chamber and there's a couple others. The other than that. This is fine, but that's the only impact they had, not me, man. So we are connecting with farmers, are clicking with other groups that were interested in this, letting them know, you know, after the council decides. Hopefully next week, we will have those um conversations about running and all that.
So we'll make our standard prices and then talk to them.
Correct. Well, maybe, yeah, we'll standardize this, lock in the prices with all that and then.
Market varies.
It could.
Depends on their partnership with the city and how invested they are.
Can you give us a recap on the, there was some lot of stuff here that was revitalized and clarified. So when we have an understanding coming into that vote, we know what we're voting on again.
Yeah, so the big thing I wanna point out is there was a big hang up on the park fees, right? That's, it seemed like recipes. And I've mentioned that during the meetings that there's, well, there's, you know, five tables in here. Make sure you look at all of them. The one thing I wanna make sure is there's no other issues with any other tables.
Just to clarify, the only hang up with me was charging private people. Yeah. That's the only thing that I have the issue is if John Doe wants to use one of the. Covered areas for whatever reason and they wanna reserve it, we're not charging them for that because. And I I had this conversation with city administrator earlier. I understand there's costs to the city, but from citizens' point of view, that's what they're paying for.
But they can't reserve it.
They can't reserve it.
There's no reservation.
I thought we were, we had talked about being able to reserve the covered areas.
Yeah, we talked about it.
The first number serve no term. But I did wanna make sure though, there's other tables there. And so some of the other stuff that got held up is like we're trying to lower the home occupation fee. But people are waiting to do their home ox until January. Well, they are still waiting because they're hoping the fee will go lower, so we had a proposed. So there's. There's, yes, so there's other fees that I want you to look at or make sure that you're okay with when this comes. But it's easy, if you're still not sure about one thing, to take out a table and we can bring it to a later meeting. We can always amend the resolution. If you guys, hey, we're still not solid on these, we wanna pull this table out, you can do that and the rest can pass, cause there's a lot of other things being held up. That people are waiting for fees that we don't have established or fees that are high that we're lowering, that we would like to get adopted or just know that they're not gonna get adopted.
So I'm gonna pack it.
We have.
Yeah, no, none of them. Yeah, I only have one, cause I figured you guys.
No, we do.
That way when we vote, we know what's already being presented.
Yeah, it's gonna be the exact same thing.
Oh, you were charging hourly then?
Yeah, we changed the hours to just events. You saw that in the last one, it was just events.
Lot fees wouldn't work.
But what we did, we did a flat fee for it all day.
Oh, okay.
So it's no longer hourly for the park.
The community center has the waiver, remember?
Do we do just a flat on the community center for residents?
You can do whatever you want. Um the.
I'm asking you.
I think as the, someone who's been working the community center a lot recently. What would be the challenges of doing like a flat all day fee for just a joke, me off the street?
Yeah, but apparently he's two hours.
A flat fee, the majority of people would be paying more than what they're paying now. So Cody could come in on a random Tuesday afternoon and rent it his space for a hundred dollars.
What?
If it was a flat fee for. A whole day. He wouldn't be able to rent it for two hours. He would have to take it for. Ten hours, eight hours, five hours at a larger amount to cover. The cost.
For average resident, it's, no one rents that. What are they using renting it for?
Um I have, so in January, I have. Re-memorial services, a um a birthday party, I have a eagle. Cuss out. Hitting, um I have a few meetings.
Lots of things.
So of those things, everything sounds like something that. Normally someone would pay to go rent a space to do anyway, but like the Eagle Scout one, that's the one that I, they should put a waiver to.
Yep, yep.
And they'll be able to.
Yeah.
All right, problem solved.
Okay.
Good.
So are we good on the fee schedule for now?
For now, okay. If there are any adjustments that maybe may or you want, I I'm, it's gonna be a quick turnaround to get it on the next meeting. So I can do that, or if there's things you guys wanna think about, we can push it to the end of January. I just wanted to get your feeling on it. Sounds like.
Were you saying, Cody, that the one that you just passed around, this guy is not the one that we were given at the city council meeting?
This one still had just some, it's the one you were given, but there's some line through, like you got rid of the hours and made the flat fee. That one is the right one.
This, no, this, this is the same as that. I don't know what that is, but the one on your.
Send it back out.
Council packet, yeah.
All right, mayor's re.
Or, yeah, the only thing I have is um on January eighteen. There will be a town hall meeting. Um for, it's the one I've been chatting about for a while now, we found a screw gates with Congressman's office. Um Commissioner, he has office with the chair of the county and then hopefully Andrew Marcus as well. Um so that would give us congressional, state, county, and then here locally. Um I'll be honest, while moderating it. Hopefully Holly as well um.
Wait, what is this you're saying?
You're interested, not. Um but yeah, so it's just an hour long, six o'clock, seven o'clock. Um people can ask whatever they want, can't or um community, yeah, just ask whatever it.
Is it live?
It'll be live, yeah.
Where?
I just, huh, what do you mean, is it live?
Are you talking about going to?
It's a town hall.
A town hall.
Yeah, it'll be here at the community center. Oh, yeah, sorry, I should have said that.
No, I'm just.
I didn't specify that. That's fair.
This, it part of um the Realtors Hill Day is on this day. I think, and we can go to the legislature and meet our. People in person, but I thought it might have been part of that, so I didn't hear that, sorry.
No, no, um this is just. Public announced meeting, so. Council is encouraging Jen. Uh before you ask questions, no, uh but yeah, it'll be a good opportunity for the public to ask questions for different levels of government. And a one stop shop for everybody.
And you don't have to fill out applications for this.
You do, you do have to fill out a case to attend.
No, I'm talking about the city utilizing buildings.
Yeah, no, no, we don't have to ask. Tomorrow.
Oh dear.
Yeah.
January eighteen.
Yep. The Congressman's office can advertise, will advertise. Um there are other folks will too, but yeah, and please, we'll put it on page tomorrow as the um ours on social media. Before we advertise it in paper, um all that, please share it when you see it. Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Joseph.
You know, I just really appreciate you guys, Cody. Thanks for the work on that and and doing the whole waiver and the understanding. I really appreciate the out here's conversation with the BOA. James, you're a really smart individual and has you guys right color. It's like you guys are really good. So um thank you, thank you for great minds and a great, great team here. I I really like. All this stuff that's happening and just watching Todd over there smiling cringe moments. It's really exciting. Good work.
Anything else?
No, just I really like how we had the business.
Good initiative.
Terry, initiatives.
I don't really have anything right now, but I just wanted to ask, did we follow up with that gentleman, that request that had that issue about the bathroom? Like I just think it's important. I wanna know what happens when people reach out and ask us questions that we get back to them in some way. And I wanna know what we said, so we know.
I don't think we did.
Okay, that's not very good.
No, it's not. I will.
Write that down, please.
Yeah, I'm writing, yeah, right now. We'll reach out to him, but we'll get him the information to contact the um executive director for T R L though, cause that's.
It's just, and I just say that because.
That's fair.
There was one time I I reached out to uh three council people from tonight who never even answered my emails and I'm like, you know what? And I don't want us to be that way with people. Yeah, we want people to be interested in what we're doing and when they're interested, we can't ignore them. So that's my thing, you know what I mean?
We will make sure we contact him. Kathy will remind me tomorrow morning.
And then the only other thing that I did was that habitat conservation plan that was very interesting, but kind of. A little underwhelming when I asked some questions. Uh that I really wasn't happy with the answer about, because um how much is that gonna cost us?
The whole plan?
Yeah.
The city is gonna cost us nothing if we get a grant.
Oh. Okay, then I rest my case.
It's so costume.
It was. Wink wink. Oh, it was interesting. I mean, in the field, when we sell property, like I said to the guy. When I go sell something, I know if there's gophers there, we can tell, we know what it is. And so I was asking him all the specifics and I was. Tongue in cheek, I'm like, are we gonna see you running through Yell with a butterfly net and capturing gophers and studying them and looking? And are we gonna see you do something? It's all, no, no, nothing like that. We won't be around at all. We're just using the best available science. It's just paperwork.
So they they do have.
They're not in the spot here looking at it.
They have people that come out and observe the areas for these animals. That does happen. So if you, but once the process is done, they don't have to come back out.
They just seem kind of. Kinda, you know, like bureaucratic. That's, that's what I'm saying. I'm trying to be diplomatic and nice, but you know, it was. That was my impression, although it was interesting and I learned a few things.
Like when I retire, I can do that, cause I can look at all the eagles.
I mean, when you sell land, you you get people from the county four times in the right season, in the right place, digging around, doing all this stuff. Like it's this actual study. So I was surprised to hear that they don't actually do that. But I just wanted to share that. It was interesting, but. Not quite what I expected.
James.
With the, with that used car placed from a through, are you aware? Over in the news, it'll be much better.
Wasn't, weren't they in the news?
What the article says or not, like, send yourself.
The article stated. That they were caught up in selling vehicles with salvage titles. And recovered type, that that type stuff. Um and. When I was looking into, there's no state law that says they can't do that. So. But I don't. If we can. To discourage that type of shady used car kind of. Regardless of whether it happened, just to prevent it from ever happening. That we have an ordinance that any used vehicle. Must be disclosed if it has a salvage title or a recovered title or something like that. And I don't see why anyone. Would not want that.
In private sale as well? Would there be exclusions?
No, no, just commercial.
If there's R C W, there's R C W superseded. Um but we'll ask our attorney soon.
Well, it seems that every other R C W, the city is allowed to. Build upon it, they just can't.
I believe there is already R C W, because if you go into the. When, where you go to do the registration, they have a. It's a bit of flyer that says you cannot. Retitle a salvaged vehicle. Once it's, once it's written off as salvage, you cannot retitle it.
One or the other, we will ask our attorney and we will get notes for you. Whether it's R C W and if we can take action, make it on a Yell municipal code, we will do so. Or we will um bring it back to you and you can do whatever you want.
Anything else?
Another reminder, Kathy.
Ashley, you have initiatives? Yeah, my initiative was just from the Yell homelessness task force, how um. We would like to the members that we would like to look at the makeup of the task force. Um as it states, there are certain positions or titles that people should be holding within that group. And um. Consider the movement of turning it into a committee instead of just a task force, make it more legit.
Do we have any? Like big issues? I can't ask the chief anymore with this. Has anything changed from last? Time we did this?
When, yeah, when that. When I was on it with Molly Kermit, we um. Along with the other task force members, we made a list of recommendations, which task forces task for to do. Um and so there's a few recommendations. I think we're doing two of those. We have the community center. And we, we did the um write up of all the different. Um organizations that provide and stuff like that. Um and there's something else I think we're, we did or we started to do.
Um, I think we only, the city only legitimately did two.
Of the three. But I mean, has the condition.
Well, the five cuz we only accepted. Less than five.
But the conditions in.
Few that we were tied on.
The condition was just feel, are they, yeah, there's anything out there different? That's not.
Yeah.
Increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
It's gonna change.
Relation of homelessness, that's different. The numbers are growing and you can look at that with the pit numbers, the point in time. Numbers growing specifically for Yelm um. Does that a good enough answer? I can keep answering.
I I think this, I mean, it's a good.
He's also on the task force.
So in regards to making a committee. Um there may have not been full agreement on it, but my understanding when I read it. Is the task force was created technically, when you look at the ordinance or not the uh. Resolution. The task force was simply created to create, to put out that report. There's nothing that really says it keeps going on after that.
Nothing really says it doesn't either.
Correct.
I understand.
But yeah, yeah, I agree though. It was an extra.
So.
Report from.
I, instead of it being called a task force, I think it needs to be. We need to figure out whether it's a committee or.
I I think it makes sense to make a committee, but um we've already shared a little bit of management. We will put this on our city session for. February for an actual discussion on it. We can decide whether or not we do or not.
Perfect.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, that was my only initiative. Brian.
I have two that uh. I'm going to be working on uh this year. One of them is with our senior center. Um I'm going to reach out to talk to the committee. That the council that works there and see about trying uh if we can work with utilizing. Uh our capability of getting grants and see about maybe upgrading that and making it so that. It becomes a bigger pla- a better place for communities instead of just a grass field with a building and see what we can do, uh what all that the city. Can do to help them out and make it into a more of a. Uh location where community can actually occur. And fact that, you know, we're coming up on one hundred years for the city. I think it'd be a great thing to, if we can get this all together and we're showing. Our uh more mature citizens, more mature residents of the area that we actually do care about them and want to provide something better. The other thing is uh that I'll be working on is with the central business district. Really wanna try to see about uh getting it so that. Once we get our one ways here, proof of concept, let's really get it. Uh the fact that like fifteen, twenty years ago, there was a study and a paper put together. This beautiful central business district that we could have and it's never moved forward. I think it's time that we actually start moving forward on that and start getting. Uh with what that plan was put together, if we have to revisit, whatever it may be, but we need to get the community. Uh business people are wanting, there's business people out there wanting to have uh space to be able to open up businesses. And we need to bring in. Uh some other things that work with our central business district, the way that we have it developed, but actually we never. Kick the chalk blocks out to allow to start developing. So that's, uh those are two items that I'll be working on this year.
Quick question. Anyone listen to that voice now regarding the cemetery? Um, I, I thought I had it queued up. Um, I just, cuz I don't remember the day it was. But there was someone. They were wanting to go to the cemetery and posted the hours on it and for whatever reason it wasn't open.
I don't remember seeing that. Voicemails translate to emails, correct?
It came through.
You know, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how I saw that.
It was probably specific to James.
James. Oh, oh my, yeah.
You're special.
Yeah.
It said, just fortunately. We can send it to Clay who's a commissioner cemetery.
Yeah, I could.
Yeah, it's not really the cities.
I didn't know if that was within city news or not.
No, it's not.
Well, this was just something.
Yeah.
Anything else? Yes. So speaking of emails, we got an email invitation for the parade. What does that look like for a city council person to have a seat in the parade?
Um I don't know if it's actual in the parade parade. I think it meant for like the stadium, but.
In the stadium, being.
What?
Joe D.
Yeah, Joe D at Yelm, I'll go.
Anything else?
Oh. So if you would love to listen, please let me know so that I can give them a.
Can I just go like this?
What parade?
Yes.
What date is it? For the tornado celebration that we spoke of.
Monday at four.
That's a Christmas.
There's a lot of different variables that went into that. But it it makes sense though. I I agree. For the students to attend it does. They have wrestling. They couldn't make it there. The kids wouldn't have been there.
The players, yeah.
Said it three times, anything else? My only initiative is Christmas lights. No, I'm just kidding.
Ending on a good note, huh?
There's my tree lights, bud.